I call to order the discussion meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. It's Monday, June 10th, 2024 at 7:42 PM. We're present in room D205 of the Mount Lebanon High School, and participation is also available via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mrs. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Gensel?
Here.
Mrs. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
All members are present.
Excellent, and I think before we begin, Dr. Fries has a statement.
Thank you. On behalf of our entire Mount Lebanon School District and School Board of Directors, we extend our most sincere and heartfelt sympathy to the family and friends of 10-year-old student Abigail Neal from Howe Elementary. Abigail was a cherished member of our Howe School community, known for her infectious smile and gentle spirit. Her kindness and willingness to help others did not go unnoticed. She brought joy and a sense of camaraderie to every classroom and activity she participated in. Abigail leaves us with an indelible mark on our hearts and minds, and her memory will live on and continue to inspire us all. She touched the lives of many, and her absence will be deeply felt by all who had the privilege of knowing her. Our thoughts are with the students' families, friends, and teachers as our school community copes with this terrible loss. To support students and staff, we had counselors at the school today, and we will have counselors at the school tomorrow between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and as needed, to continue to support our students, faculty, and staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fries. And in Abigail's memory, I'm just going to ask for a moment of silence. Okay. Moving on to the agenda for tonight, we have first wrapped of finance items. First up is our treasurer's report for May. I do want to acknowledge that our monthly, the close of the month is still happening. We're early in the month, so that report will be available for the board and the public at the June 17th meeting, or Budget vs. Actual, I should say. But we do have our treasurer's report. Yes, Dr. Fries.
So included in this month is our treasurer's report. It provides an overview of our general fund, payroll account, capital projects fund, real estate tax account, cafeteria fund, and just an overview of the ins and outs for the month. As Mrs. Fleischer mentioned, there will be a report in there for next week that gives us a breakdown of where we ended for the month of May and where we project to end for the school year. And at next week's meeting, Mr. Kamara will give a brief overview of our findings for the end of May and moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Well, I look forward to hearing more from Mr. Kamara next Monday. The next item on the agenda is the monthly list of bills.
In this area, you will see the monthly list of bills that are broken down by general fund with the check number, check date, vendor name, description, subtotal and total, as well as it's in alphabetical order so that you're able to see the breakdown between the descriptions of the costs and then the individuals that we paid.
Excellent. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, who is Marfred Realty? Is that the Galleria, or what is that?
Marfred Realty is the property which leases to Fresh Market Joseph A. Bank.
Okay.
Large property right on the corner there of 19.
Sure.
Except.
Connor Road and 19.
Yeah, yeah.
Refund, that's on the line.
Yeah, and that refund, not to sound like a broken record, but is driven by the common level ratio. The appraisals and the rents for those properties were pretty stable, but as the court order and the common level ratio continues to reduce down to roughly the 60% mark now, we're seeing the biggest impact on these commercial appeals. So this is a settlement. We, our office discussed it with the administration, and we viewed this as better than actually going to a hearing on it because we had an appraisal that everyone was comfortable with, that we thought was accurate. It's just when you apply it to a 64% ratio rather than an 82, that's where you get these large refunds.
Does that agreement extend beyond this current?
No, it's only up through this year. We didn't really want to go into the next year because we already know next year will be even lower, and we didn't want to sort of give that away. Next year, the thought is that the reduction might only be 2% or 3%, which in and of itself may not be enough to make it worthwhile for people to file appeals because, of course, they always have the risk that we'll have evidence that their property is now worth more.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Which brings us to item C, which is the list of tax refunds.
We have two tax refunds that will be provided this month. The one is to a residential for $2,248.26, and the other one is to Marfred Realty, as Mr. Peterson discussed, and that one is $97,924.54. That gives us a total for those two of $100,172.80, and it brings our cumulative total for this school year to $1236,084.73. I think this is a really clear reason why the common level ratio has a significant impact on our school district, specifically as it relates to commercial properties. It has taken a huge toll on us this school year.
Yeah, it doesn't go unnoticed that that cumulative total is very close to also the projected deficit for the year. Are there other questions and comments about the tax refunds? I guess my question is, was this an anticipated? It was a settlement. So in terms of the projections we've been seeing, for where we will finish up, was this settlement already accounted for?
Yes, those who are kind of through or who are work with our solicitor and with the municipality.
I assumed so, but I just wanted to ask it publicly. Okay. The next item on the agenda, item D is the list of unusable, I almost said unusual equipment, but it's unusable.
Well, some of it is unusual. The list of unusable equipment includes gym equipment in good condition, pallets of iPads in fair condition, and textbooks in fair to good condition. We recommend the approval of this list. When you click on the link, you'll see that there's a Body Master Pro and Leg Curl. So that's unusual, and some lat pull downs and stuff like that. And then iPads that no longer take iOS updates that are also included, as well as books. This is a process that the school, the teachers go through each year, and these are the books that would be recommended for as unusable.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I was surprised to see that gym equipment is already reaching the end of its lifetime. Is this from our high school, which was recently renovated as well, or is this something else?
Dr. Fries, if I may?
Please.
So these three pieces of equipment are actually at Mellon Middle School, and it is the intent of Mellon to kind of redefine physical education activities. And in the space they have, these three large pieces of equipment are making it impractical for them to move to more of an aerobics or a fitness-type approach to physical education. So they believe that moving these pieces out will give them better flexibility of using the space. I would comment, just so the community is aware, in that first block where it says, you know, there's a Body Master Pro, and then there's a Leg Curl, Leg Extension, then the Low Row. Each one of those pieces is $300. So if you're going to take the entire machine, it's $900, and you better bring a big truck. They're heavy, and they're difficult to move, yes. So I just didn't want people to think that it was 300 for the entire machine. It's 300 for each piece of the machine.
All right, any other questions? Excellent. All right, moving on to the June 30th list of bills. Can you review this as an item that might be new to some of us on the board?
Yeah, absolutely. So each year, the board is asked to approve payment of bills prior to our June 30th year-end so that as many bills as possible are able to be allocated to the correct fiscal year. The list of checks for these payments will be presented for ratification at the August board meeting. Basically, we want to make sure that as bills come in that we are paying them so we don't get further back in the cycle of being able to end out '23, '24. This is something that is asked for each year. The board will be provided with the list of bills in our weekly updates at the end of the month, so they'll get to see them. We'll pay them, and then they'll be ratified again in August. So you're going to vote next week, and then you'll vote again in August, just so that we know that everybody sees what we're paying out.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Just keepin' the lights on. Right, and then we have a similar item F on budgetary transfers needed to close the school year.
Yes, so again, very similar to list of bills. Annually, the board is requested to approve budgetary transfers necessary to close the fiscal year. The list will be presented for ratification prior to approval of the audit in October, and I recommend this as well. Many of you may know that this year we have changed the process for budgetary transfers. We've been putting them on each month and reviewing them with the board as to the transfers that were being made. These transfers were necessary because of allocations that were not appropriate, that not appropriately made when the budget was created last year. So we would continue to make these transfers to ensure that we can pay our bills for the end of the year. The board would be given updates so that they know along the way the transfers that we're making. And then the final one would be approved prior to the audit in October.
I guess I have a question on why we wouldn't necessarily see at least the list in August.
You'll see it.
We will.
Yeah, I mean, that's my goal is that. Yeah. My goal is that anything that we transfer between the board meeting next week and August, that the board gets that.
Excellent.
But everything, every transfer that needs to be made to end out the year will occur by October, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Other questions or comments on that item? Okay. And then we do have a list of budgetary transfers for the month?
We do. Budgetary transfers for June, total $47,008 for utility bills, refuge removal, sewage, bus maintenance, floor drags and mats, elevator maintenance and repairs, bus radios, safety supplies, football uniforms, paper supplies, umpires, library supplies, or language competition and staff development. We recommend these for approval to transfer.
Okay, questions or comments on the transfers?
It's good we didn't have a lot of snow this year, Mr. Mercinius.
We did have some.
We did have sewage, though.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next item, item H, is the school district insurance policies.
So annually, the district's insurance broker, which is Kelly Insurance, represented by Jonathan Kelly here tonight, bids out our insurance for property and liability, directors and officers, cyber and student accident coverage. This year's low bid for property and liability and DNO insurance is with CM Regent at their bid price of $397,054. The low bid for cyber insurance was Chubb at their bid price of $24,333. And the low bid for student accident insurance was AIG of Pittsburgh at their bid price of $13,551. We have Mr. Kelly here with us this evening, and he's going to provide us with a presentation, an overview of these insurance coverages. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Kelly.
Of course, of course. Get this situated here. Well, good evening. Dr. Fries, Ms. Fleischer, and the rest of the board. I appreciate your time tonight. Well, each year around this time, Mount Lebanon must renew various insurance policies, some of which are the reason I'm here. I provide property and liability insurance, student accident and cyber data breach for the district. My focus and my mission has been to put the district and its school board in the best possible position to have claims paid while carefully considering the associated costs of the premium. Currently, we enlist three different insurance companies from Mount Lebanon, CM Regent, AIG, and Chubb. For those of you that don't know, CM Regent took over the PSBA-sponsored school insurance program a few years ago. The student accident with AIG and the cyber data breach with Chubb, although not a part of the PSBA program, exceeds what is available from the School Boards Association. Industry-wide, costs of insurance are increasing anywhere from 10% in the low end to 25% and 50% on the high end. There are many of you here that have recently received personal auto and home insurance bills only to realize that there's a stark difference in what you paid this year as compared to last year. And the fact is, the industry as a whole is seeing this problem. In 2023, the total industry-wide loss ratio for commercial insurance was 110%. That means, on average, every single commercial insured in the U.S. had claim payouts that exceeded the premium collected. This has led to term deductible and pricing changes across the board. Although Mount Lebanon's loss ratio is better than the average, it is still hovering around 100% to 105%. In this year, for the 2024 term, we asked various insurance companies to provide quotes, some of which include Utica, Liberty Mutual, and Travelers. The lowest bids this year came from CM Regent for the property and liability, AIG for the student accident, and Chubb for the cyber and data breach insurance. Not only were these the lowest bids, but they also provided the most comprehensive coverage amongst the competition. And although the accident insurance and data breach insurance came in as expected, the property and liability with CM Regent saw some adversity. Due to the aforementioned market conditions and loss ratio data, the 2024 commercial package pricing increased by about 14% as compared to last year. An important note is that CM Regent has made a decision as a company to increase the minimum allowable deductible on the property from $5,000 to $25,000. But they also decided to decrease the boiler and equipment deductible from $5,000 to $2,500. And apart from the deductible changes, CM Regent has decreased the maximum allowable liability limits under the excess, the commercial excess liability policy, from $20 million to $15 million. CM Regent's decision was not made for anything the district did or didn't do. It's just a symptom and a result of the current market conditions we're in. As compared to many other school districts, a $15 million excess liability limit stands out as a differentiator amongst others. The ability for any one school district to secure liability limits above $10 million, let alone $15 million, is an extraordinary feat. And taking these factors into consideration, my suggestion to the district would be to choose CM Regent, AIG, and Chubb for the 2024, 2025 insurance program. Dr. Fries, Ms. Fleischer, I appreciate your time. And for the rest of the board, if there's any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? So you mentioned the limit, the liability limit is high compared to other districts. Is the deductible in line with where you're seeing?
The deduct, Mount Lebanon's property values are much higher than other local districts, and the size of the amount of property insurance that you have required a higher deductible, required a higher deductible. Smaller school districts are able to secure a lower deductible, but those are when property values total less than $100 million. But Mount Lebanon has about $330 million total insurance value amongst all their property. And so with property values like that, insurance values, the requirements are a little bit different.
And that's helpful context, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, are there things that the district can do to help lower these rates in the future? For example, the cyber policy. You know, if we had any type of data policy or practices that we would implement, would that help to bring down costs potentially in the future?
Last year, there was a major concern that the cyber renewal pricing would be coming in and about double what it was. And through Chris and the IT Department, and through the various protocols that they put in place and the things that are going on here currently, they were able to keep it very similar to what it was. And so with the things that you can do, it's, I don't want to say it's unfortunate, but the claims that Mount Lebanon sees are when Lincoln's floor was replaced by a water leak. You know, the, how preventing those things, you know, it's kind of the purpose of insurance, and there's just some things that happen. Boilers crack when weather changes, and that's just the nature of the beast. And each year, there are certain inspections that happen. You know, for instance, someone will walk through and they'll ask someone in the art department to remove the acetylene tanks that are next to the kiln, as an example. But I think the deductible could help, unfortunately. I think the increase of deductible could bode well for next year's renewal. I don't expect the same increase to happen next year, especially in light of the increase in deductible. I would expect claims to drop significantly. So apart from inspections and common sense approaches, I think the district is doing what it needs to do in order to maintain a favorable rate.
This is more of an administrative question, I guess. But, you know, we sort of had these estimates while we were working through the budgeting process. So in light of like what Mr. Kelly was just saying, that the deductible is going up, so there are some property needs that we may have made a claim for before that wouldn't necessarily be worth it with the higher deductible. Did we account for having to do more of those out of pocket rather than through an insurance claim when we were putting together the budget?
Yes, because we had that advanced information by working closely with what was occurring related to deductible increases, and we were able to see the history of what our claims were. And thank you very much for all the data you gave us. So we were able to see, here's what, okay, this would have been ours completely. We had some of it paid for, but now it's going to be all of ours. So when we installed that, we knew that. We made an estimate for what could occur with the same types of activity with a higher deductible. So to answer it simply, we've covered what we expect to occur based on the change in deductible in past history.
Excellent. Yes, thank you for providing the data that the budget managers needed to be able to incorporate that. Other questions? All right. Thanks, Mrs. Kelly.
Thank you.
And any other questions or comments in general on this agenda item before we move on? Okay. The next two items we did discuss in May and will be voting on next week, but is there anything to add about I or J? Are they the same items as May?
Yes.
Any question? Just so the board knows, Mrs. Walters, the board secretary was in touch with the board secretary at the Pathfinder's jointure. The timing is, it will work for them for what they need and when they need the information for us to vote on this next month. This month. This is next month already. Did you have anything to add, Mrs. Burdick? I know they've met since then, but.
No. We'll be voting on it, and then two days later is the meeting. So it's timely. There's also, one of these is for a paper, a proposal to vote by paper. So I suppose we'll be mailing that in.
Yeah, typically, I think there is a ballot that has to be signed after the board takes action. We will get that right out. Okay, agenda item K is the list of donations.
Annually, a list of donations to the schools is compiled and presented to the board for acceptance. The list shows the community's commitment to our schools and our programming, and we're very grateful for their support. I recommend the acceptance of these donations from the community. And these are listed here by school, who the donor was, the type of donation, and the amount of the donation. We have a total of $240,065.67 of donations.
The anonymous school board, or school board? Scoreboard donation is exceptional.
Yes.
Yes. Regarding that scoreboard, is that to be located at the main stadium or up at the practice field?
The main stadium.
Can you blink once if it's Mark Cuban?
Nobody blink.
Nobody blink.
Yeah, that is a very, very generous donation. And they all are. And I just want to also say thank you to the PTAs at all of the schools. This list also includes necessary supplies and equipment and programming that they bring in every year for our students through their fundraising activities and help make the schools just a better place to be. So thank you to the PTAs. Other questions or comments? Okay. The next line item is the food service budget and lunch prices.
The budget for the food service department is presented at $2,962,618. Food service program is self-funded. The lunch prices for the 2024-2025 school year are presented for board consideration. Tier one lunch is $2.65 for elementary and $2.80 for secondary, which is a freeze on current year rates, and we recommend the approval of these actions.
Questions or comments?
I appreciate the rate freeze for, I know that sort of the USDA does provide the ability to raise prices up to certain levels every year.
Yes.
And are we under those levels now? Or did we just forego that, or?
We chose not to raise them. We looked at what our budget is, and we looked at the amount of income we've brought in because it's self-funded, and we determined that there wasn't a need to increase costs for the school year.
This is just for lunch? We also provide breakfast?
Breakfast is free. It's provided by the state.
As, there's not any consideration toward moving toward purchasing breakfast
in addition to the free supplies? I mean, there's a free lunch, too, but we have a purchasable lunch. Is there a purchasable breakfast in line?
All breakfast is free. So no matter what, you know, if there's an allotment, you get this, you get that, you get the other. But no matter who you are in the school district, as a student, you receive it for free if you choose to eat it. Of course, you know, kids may buy something extra, like a tea, which isn't included, but they are provided free breakfast as a part of the state's movement to get students eating breakfast in the morning.
Yes, and I think the board did also resolve last year in support of universal free breakfast and lunches. But I think the move last year at the Commonwealth level was toward to start with the breakfast. Other questions? Next item is the annual dairy bid.
Annually, the district bids dairy for food service operations. The current dairy supplier, Turner Dairy, was the only bidder at a cost of $21,270 for the 2024-2025 school year, and I recommend the approval of this bid.
Questions or comments? All right. I always love hearing about the blind taste tests. I guess we just had the wine bit. Let's go. And very importantly, at least in my house, the next item is the ice cream. And very importantly, at least in my house, the next item is the ice cream bid.
Annually, the district bids ice cream for food service operations. The current ice cream supplier is Hershey's. This was the only bidder at a cost of $7,732 for the 2024-2025 school year, and I recommend approval of this bid.
Questions or comments? Okay, the next section of our agenda is related to human resources. The first line item in that section is our monthly personnel report.
Personnel report details personnel appointments, changes in assignments, leaves of absences, resignations, sabbaticals, and retirements to be considered by the board.
Any questions or comments? Okay. And the next is related to the Act 93 group.
The administration recommends approval of the Administrative Compensation and Performance Plan for the Mount Lebanon School District Administrators, also known as the Act 93 pursuant to the amendments to the plan and terms and conditions as presented. The effective dates of the plan are July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2025. And the document in essence has a change in the date of the term from its current, which is to end on June 30th of 2024, to extend it for just one year. And the only other change to the agreement is to move from two work-from-home days on non-student days to five. We believe as an administration and as an Act 93 that due to our current financial constraints, that it would not be appropriate to have any discussions about finances. And so having met with them over the course of the last few months, this was the meet and discuss arrangement that we were able to agree to. I shouldn't say agreed to because it's a meet and discuss, but that we arranged and you will see the contract or the agreement for your approval this month. And I just want to thank the Act 93 for their willingness to work with us. They are a great group to work with and we're very appreciative of their service to and commitment to the school district and our students.
Questions or comments? I guess I just want to echo Dr. Freeze's appreciation for this group willing to meet and discuss these issues and to extend their agreement for one more year and then a commitment to continued discussion. Okay, we have a suite of approvals of contractual salary increases, starting with agenda item C, which is the performance rating and salary increase for the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education.
Annually, the board is required to review the performance of Assistant Superintendents in accordance with statutory requirements. The performance of Dr. Ronald Davis, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, has been rated satisfactory for the 2023-2024 school year. Under the terms of Dr. Davis's employment, his salary is $196,650 for the 2024-2025 school year. The recommended 3.5% salary increase is consistent with the Act 93 salary adjustments, and the superintendent recommends approval of this rating and salary.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I'll just note that the board will have, for both of these agenda items, the opportunity to review the performance evaluations in executive session next week prior to voting to accept the recommendation. But I do want to thank Dr. Davis and Dr. Shulo for their above and beyond performance this year, working with Dr. Freeze and working on their very important roles and several other roles that may have been unanticipated. It's very much appreciated. Agenda item D is a performance rating and salary increase for Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education.
Annually, the board is required to review the performance of the Assistant Superintendents in accordance with statutory requirements. The performance of Dr. Joseph Shulo, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, has been rated satisfactory for the 2023-2024 school year. Under the terms of Dr. Shulo's employment, his salary is $175,950 for the 2024-2025 school year. The recommended 3.5% salary increase is consistent with the Act 93 salary adjustments, and the superintendent recommends approval of this rating and salary.
Questions or comments?
I just want to add as well how thankful I am to have Dr. Shulo and Dr. Davis here. They are incredible supports and probably one of the only reasons why we made it through the year, because they were able to work creatively alongside myself and the rest of the executive team to do some really hard work that was necessary to do the very best for our students. So very appreciative of them, and they have to listen to me, so that's a lot to say.
Get to, get to. Okay, and agenda item E is the approval of administrative salaries.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve annual negotiated salary adjustments for administrators effective July 1 of 2024 for a satisfactory rating.
Questions or comments? Is there any, will there be sort of any additional information to the board about the list of administrators and their ratings and salaries?
I think typically there's an attachment for all of you, but it's not completed yet.
It's not completed yet.
But it'll be in there. But it is consistent with the Assistant Supes that if you have a satisfactory rating, the increase is 3.5%. So what satisfactory rating equates to a 3.5% increase.
Okay. Agenda item F is the approval of the list of annual salaries for specialists.
The superintendent recommends that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for specialists effective July 1 of 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%. And that will also be included for next week.
Other questions or comments? All right. And G is the approval of the list of annual salaries for administrative assistants and supervisors.
Superintendent recommends that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for administrative assistants supervisors effective July 1 of 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%.
Questions or comments? This agenda item H is the approval of the list of annual salaries for 12-month secretaries.
Superintendent recommends that the board approves the negotiated annual contract salaries for 12-month secretaries effective July 1 of 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3.9%.
Questions or comments? All right, agenda item I is the approval of the salaries for the head custodians.
Superintendent recommends that the board approves the annual salary adjustments for head custodians effective July 1, 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3%.
Questions or comments? Agenda item J is the approval of the list of annual salaries for custodial and maintenance employees.
Superintendent recommends the board approve the annual salary adjustments for custodial maintenance employees as listed, effective July 1 of 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3.26%.
Questions or comments? And then the last personnel item is the approval of the list of annual salaries for food service workers.
Superintendent recommends approval of the negotiated annual contract salaries for food service employees as listed effective July 1 of 2024, reflecting an average increase of 3% over the duration of the contract.
Questions or comments? Okay, we're moving on to the next section of the agenda, which is related to curriculum and instruction. The first item on that agenda is the approval of the 2024 list of graduates.
Well, we are thankful to ask for the approval of the list of graduates for the current school year, 443 students that graduated last Thursday night. This list has been reviewed and the students recommended by the high school administration of meeting the requirements for graduation. The board will take action on the approved list of graduates at the June 17 meeting. We had a beautiful night. We did not have rain, which was, we might have had four drops. Or maybe we were just sweating. I'm not sure which one, but it was a beautiful night. The students did a fantastic job of, the student that gave the speech, I thought she did a fantastic job, very, very touching. And it was just a beautiful night, and I was very thankful that we didn't get rained on. I did not want to become a meme.
I think there already is one from 2018, I think it was.
Yes, I was trying not to have more likes.
Any questions or comments on the list of graduates? I also just want to say thank you to the administration and Dr. Thompson for everything and Student Activities Office for everything they do to make that night so special for the students and their families.
One more thing, I would just like to also say thank you to facilities because it looked absolutely incredible. And, you know, to be like on it, Johnny on a spot, just in case, because we did have four drops. So thank you for all that you do with setup and cleanup because we had a really busy week in here as well, and it went unscathed, so thank you.
Thank you to whoever gave me giant earplugs. That was really helpful for the microphone that they have there. The next item on this, in the section item B, is the agreement where we're going to go through just a series of agreements with different educational and service providers now for students. So buckle up. The first one is an agreement with the Allegheny Children's Initiative.
Board is being asked to consider an agreement with the Allegheny Children's Initiative, ACI, to provide student assistance program services to the district for the 2024-2025 school year. There is no cost to the district for this service, and the letter of agreement has been reviewed by the solicitor, and we recommend approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments? Just confirming that ACI is the current provider of these services. And the liaison for all these teams, right? The SAP.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, next agenda item, item C is an agreement with the Tillotson School.
The board is asked to consider an agreement with the Tillotson School for provision of an extended school year program for two students at a cost of $2,500 per student for a total of $5,000 for services beginning on June 17, 2024 and ending on July 18 of 2024. I recommend approval of this agreement.
Okay, questions or comments?
The note here on the agenda indicates there's no cost to the school district.
For the Tillotson School?
I think that...
Am I looking at the wrong one? I'm looking at the wrong one.
That happened to me, like I clicked down, but I still have the body copy prior.
Okay, I got it, because I opened the document, saw a cost. That's why I was asking, but...
Yeah, so the Allegheny Children's Initiative, there's no cost for them to provide SAP services, but there is a cost for the extended school year program.
Yes.
For the Tillotson School. Other questions, comments? Okay. The next one is a renewal of the agreement with the Bradley Center School-Based Mental Health Program.
This is a request for the board to approve an agreement with the Bradley Center School-Based Mental Health Program for the 2024-2025 school year. As many of you know, in the audience, and then of course, the board members, in October, we approved this agreement with the Bradley Center, and they began providing services in the spring after we received certification from the state. And we are finishing up the last few approvals for our elementary schools so that we will have all 10 schools receiving services in the fall. There is no cost to the district for these services, and if needed, additional services are available at a cost, as stated in the addendum. I do recommend approval for this service. I'd just like to say too that they are new to our school district, but when we need them, they are there today. They were there, they brought three individuals in to provide supports. Allegheny Children's Initiative did the same exact thing. They had two individuals there to support us, and they'll be back again tomorrow. I would say that the response from them was within minutes of sending them an email for help, and for that, we're greatly appreciative because that doesn't always happen everywhere.
I'm thankful for this partnership. I am looking forward to seeing it grow next year with all of the elementary schools and very thankful for the support they were providing today. Other questions or comments?
I just want to echo those statements. You know, it cannot be overstated the importance of mental health for students, you know, and even the impact that mental health has on academic outcomes. There are a lot of reasons to provide supports, and I'm happy to see that the district is emphasizing and prioritizing mental health and finding a way to do it that costs the district no money. So really great stuff.
Well, and I mean, just the ability for families to find qualified providers or to, you know, have referrals with...
And to schedule the time. You know, there are many difficult things to do, so it's great to be able to streamline that process for families.
Other questions or comments? All right, the next item, agenda item E, is the educational services by the Bradley School.
The board is asked to approve a contract with the Bradley School for the provision of special education services for a Mount Lebanon exceptional student during the 2024-2025 school year. Costs will not exceed $39,128.40 per student. We do not anticipate sending more than four students, and the superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Okay, questions or comments? Agenda item F is educational services provided by the Children's Institute.
Board is asked to approve an agreement with the Children's Institute for the provision of special education placement for the 2024-2025 school year. The tuition cost is $68,355 per year. Children's Institute is an approved private school, state subsidized, non-residential. The district is responsible for 40% of the cost. The cost of the program will not exceed $27,342 for one student. Superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments? Okay, moving on to item G, which is educational services by Pittsburgh ABA.
Board is asked to approve an agreement with Pittsburgh Behavioral Services, Inc., Pittsburgh ABA, for the provision of special education services for a Mount Lebanon exceptional student for the 2024-2025 school year. The cost will not exceed $33,250, and I recommend approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments? The next item, item H, is educational services provided by the University School.
The board is asked to approve an agreement with the University School for the provision of special education services for a Mount Lebanon exceptional student during the 2024-2025 school year. The cost will not exceed $28,000 per student. We have an anticipation for no more than two students. I recommend the approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments?
Is the $27,000 an estimate or the exact tuition? The reason I'm asking is, I believe this is the same amount from last year that was approved, and the tuition, unless it includes other things, is for this current year at like $22,000. So I'm just trying to figure out why the numbers are off. So, I'm just trying to figure out why the numbers are off.
Will the costs go up each year? So, I'll let Dr. Schuman share that.
Yeah. So, during the budget process, we reached out to all of our contracted service providers to get updates on agreements and contracts for the following year. So, the majority of them have submitted their updated pricing. There are a few that we are still trying to tidy up. So, that agreement there that I can look at is the updated one for '24-25.
It is the same amount as last year.
Okay.
Well, it's, okay, because the agreement says it's for '23 to '24 at $27,000.
Yeah, it looks like that's not the right agreement.
Yeah, so that might have been the wrong attachment.
Right, so we'll just make sure that the attachment is updated before. Thank you for, that was confusing.
Well, the question, I guess, was because the amount was 27 from last year, which is above the tuition. That's why I was trying to figure out something else.
But the tuition is $28,000 this year, so it will go up slightly.
And the tuition last year is listed as $27,000.
So, the tuition, so that's where my questions are, because the tuition for '23-24 is at $22,275. So, that's where the clarity question came in.
Where is that at?
From their, from their site.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would say that in the past, we haven't done these contracts until the school year started, and we're trying to be more upfront with them before the school year starts. So, I will go back to them and ask them why. Sometimes their costs are more expensive based upon the need of the student. They're not always, the information on there is not always accurate. But I will, will most certainly ask them why their prices are different online than they are in the contracts they're providing to us.
So, then more information forthcoming on the current contract and any clarification on the cost. Other questions or comments? Okay. Agenda Item I is educational services provided by the, we'll just say, WISCA.
The board is asked to approve an agreement with the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement for the '23-24 school year for the provision of placement of a special education student. The annual cost of the service is $57,155, which will be prorated with a start date of May 9, 2024. Contract will not exceed $7,030, and the superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Should this also be the '24-25 school year?
No, this is a student that was placed there effective May 9 of 2024. And we own, as of right now, it'll only through the end of the school year.
Other questions and comments? And comments? Okay. Agenda Item J, translation services by Global Wordsmiths.
Board is asked to approve an agreement with Global Wordsmiths for the provision of translation services as a rate of $15 to $17 per 15 minutes, depending on language, with a two-hour minimum and mileage billable at the federal per diem rate. On-demand telephonic interpretation services are billed at a rate of $1 per minute with a $5, $5-minute minimum. District recommends approval of this agreement.
Okay. Questions or comments? I'll just ask the question publicly since I asked it when I saw the agenda. This is in addition to the translation services provided by the IU for more sort of nuanced or complex conversations, is my understanding?
Yes. It is, it allows us to speak to our families who English is not their first language and allows us to provide them with basically the opportunity to understand what is taking place with their child and to ask questions through an interpreter.
Okay. Do they also provide interpretation services for students who are taking diagnostic examinations? I know we had a, we had a situation in which we hired a psychologist who could speak a certain language. Is this in addition to that?
No. Those people have to be qualified in a different way, and so, this is just for speaking with families. Then we have other people who help us with the special ed translations for evaluation and for creation of IEPs.
Any other questions? Item K, which is ESY, Educational Services Provided by Kerry Albert Learning Solutions.
This is a request for the board to approve agreements with Kerry Albert's Learning Solutions to provide academic services via instruction to the home for Mount Lebanon School District exceptional students for extended school year for up to eight hours per week, not to exceed five weeks. The cost will be $50 per hour for eight hours of weekly instruction time, two hours of weekly prep time, and two hours of weekly for other services, including paperwork, compliance, data review, development of IEPs, progress monitoring, virtual meetings, and ongoing communication with the school team and parent or guardian. And will not extend, or I'm sorry, exceed $3,000 per student. Services are anticipated for two students, and I recommend the approval of this agreement, subject to final approval by our solicitor before the regular meeting.
Questions or comments? Moving on to Agenda Item L, which is for a separate agreement for educational services provided by Kerry Albert's Learning Solutions.
Request for the board to approve an agreement with Kerry Albert's Learning Solutions to provide academic services via instruction in the home for a Mount Lebanon district exceptional student for up to 14 hours per week, not to exceed 19 weeks. The cost will be $50 per hour for review, development of IEPs, progress monitoring, virtual meetings, and ongoing communication with the school team and parents or guardians. Services are anticipated for the first semester of the 2024-2025 school year and will not exceed $13,300. Recommendation, I recommend this to be approved, subject to final approval by the solicitor before the regular meeting.
Questions? All right. Questions or comments? Okay. And then there is a separate, second educational services agreement with Kerry Albert's Learning Solutions.
Again, a request to approve an agreement with Kerry Albert's Learning Solutions to provide academic services via instruction in the home for an exceptional student for the 2024-2025 school year for up to 19 hours per week, not to exceed 184 school days. Cost will be $50 per hour for 15 hours of weekly instruction time, two hours of weekly prep work, and two hours of weekly for other services, including paperwork, compliance, data review, development of IEPs, progress monitoring, virtual meetings, and ongoing communication with the school team. And parent guardian will not exceed $35,150. Recommend approval of this agreement, subject to final approval by the solicitor.
Questions or comments? Okay. We're up to the fifth section of our agenda, which is for questions or comments from residents. Presentations or comments are to be limited to three minutes. Anyone in the audience wishing to make comment, please approach the podium. Anyone online wishing to make comment, Mr. Sieg? I'd like to announce that the board met in executive session for purposes of personnel and to interview and audit them. And we have an upcoming public meeting, June 17, 2024, at 7:30 PM. It'll be the regular meeting of the board here in Room D205, with participation also available via Zoom. I believe we also hold a public policy meeting on June 17 at...
6:15.
6:15 PM in Room D205. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Zach said.